...resurfacing program and that we would do a slightly thinner overlay, we would do more minor patching, we wouldn't do curb and gutter, we wouldn't do sidewalk, we wouldn't do drainage. But that's the kind of thing I'm anticipating we would use for something like Royal Oaks, where ultimately they need a full reconstruct, but it's a number of years off. So we could do that this summer.
Excuse me, what page are you on? I'm not clear. Where are you?
Fourteen twenty-two.
Okay, fourteen. I'm hearing all different page numbers. Where am I?
Page twenty-two.
Thank you.
Project thirteen.
Okay. Okay, so then you're looking at oh-nine, the hundred thousand dollars. So that's this summer, hundred thousand dollars to do that work. Is that correct?
Correct. And again, it could be for Royal Oaks, it could be for other areas. As Alderman Caddella mentioned, that, you know, had a rough winter, have more potholes on them, maybe didn't, came out worse than some of the other streets, maybe the original study isn't quite as accurate with them because they deteriorated a little bit further. We can go ahead and patch those this summer, again, do more minor resurfacing on them, knowing they'll get more major work in the future. And again, I'll point out, you know, we will reevaluate the streets. We're only locking in oh-nine streets at this point. I mean, we can always rearrange and move things up for future years when we do this again next year.
Right, and so we're all clear. We can have a discussion on streets and alleys, and we don't have to keep on bringing up Royal Oaks because on page twenty-two, in two thousand nine, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars being set aside to fix up the cul-de-sac in other areas. So I mean, so we're all in perspective. Thank you.
Mr. Cols, can I, yeah, getting back to alleys, I think maybe instead of spending a million-two, if we go to half of that, six-twenty or even up to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, that we need to do it. I, you know, eleven years on the council, we talked about alleys every year in the budget, and every year they get scrapped for whatever reason. I think Mr. Lewitan came up with a very valid point, saying that we need to help our merchants too. Let them get access to, you know, some good delivery areas for their products and stuff like that. You know, it's not going to, you know, solve all the economy problems, but we need to consider them. We've been putting this off for eleven years. Now it's time either we do something or we don't, and just tell them, hey, you're not a priority, you know, you're gonna have a little trouble getting your trucks in for delivery, too bad. We got streets, we have residents who are complaining, we're gonna look at them first. We have to do the mix. After eleven years, you know, take half of it, take seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, whatever, and maybe put the other half into twenty-eleven. But you gotta keep it in there. You just can't say, hey, you know, abandon it, or let's do one here, one there. No, it's no shotgun. Do it, don't do it.
I don't think I was willing to abandon the alleys here. I think my discussion before I started is that we take half this year, or whatever figure we come out, and we take that six-hundred-and-twenty thousand. And if we have more streets that need more patching after the hard winter with the grinding surface, I would have no problem taking some of that money to do that in the whole entire city. Not this one area, not this one ward, but do the whole city of a bad winter.
Well, I'm just saying that the history that I've seen in the council is they abandoned them. The alleys are just put off.
No, I want to do half.
You got money allocated for alleys, fine, we'll spend it somewhere else. And that's what we've been doing for eleven years.
No, I, and I agree with you one-hundred percent. I think we should do half, definitely this year, no doubt about it.
Or more.
Okay? Or more, whatever. But I think staff should look at what alleys are worth and let them come back with us, and they got our direction, that I feel that, the way we feel about alleys, and let them make the decision on if it, more than, it's more. But I don't think the council is in favor of doing all the alleys at one time. Mr. Cols.
I agree with that, because there's some alleys that are still dirt. They're not even, they're not even blacked out. So I mean, I agree with that, but I don't think we should spend the whole amount.
All right, so now we get the, so the consensus that I'm getting here that we are not doing the whole amount of alleys. Okay?
Not a consensus, not a uniform consensus.
See one thing. The only good alley in Wooddale is behind Mr. Alderman Nuncio's former property. This man is the only man who ever took care of an alley.
That's because as a business owner, I put it in myself. Yeah, I mean, the other business owners want to step up and put them in, I'm sure the city would be more than happy to take their money like they took mine. Personally, personally, I think we should do about forty percent of the alleys and hit the streets where the residents are, need to be taken care of. Spending a million-two, maybe in the past, the previous councils always put it on the back burner. I don't say put it on the back burner, but maybe forty percent. Spend four-hundred thousand on the alleys, take the two worst alleys or whatever, three, do them, and then let's patch, you know, let's get some of these streets that are down the road here on these, on this road project, and get them through. Otherwise, another bad winter like we're just having, we're having one, had one last year, we had one this year, we're having one, who knows next year.
To clarify something on earlier question, we were spending, I think, two million dollars a year on capital projects between road and sewer. Then we passed a one percent referendum, which is supposed to bring in two million dollars. That's why we should, I like the idea that we're going up to about three and a half million dollars a year to spend, because that's what that one, that extra one percent was for.
Mr. Cols. I know why Proto-Splaza put in a good alley, because he had trucks, that he had to keep going in there every day with his trucks, and he had, if he would have had it just a, an alley that was made by, instead of cement, it would have fell apart. That's the reason why he put a good alley in. That's, you know, when you run trucks over it every day, it'll take a beating. And that's what's happened to some of the, some of the alleys, that alley in back of the depot, they have trucks coming in there, so.
Okay, so the.
I agree with you.
So the alleys, my opinion is, we do, we do half, or we do fifty percent of them this year, and then take that money earmarked for resurfacing, re-grinding some streets down that needs to be done, that's outlook. So that will be my motion on the floor to do that.
Do we need, can I say something?
Go ahead.
Do we need to, we don't need to make a motion for every one of these pages, right?
Well, we gotta give them directions. We're gonna make a direction motion to prove it or not.
I mean, if you've got consensus, then that's our direction. If there's, Alderman Lewitan said it, there's not consensus on this one, so I guess I'd want.
I won't take a motion on it, right.
A tentative vote on this. And what I'm, I guess what I'm hearing from this is, if this is the way the council wants to go, we would divide the alleys over, split them over two years, and we would accelerate some of the street projects noted on page sixteen and seventeen, and we'd move some of those up and accelerate some of those. We wouldn't be able to add any additional streets, because we're not taking alleys out of the project, we're just dividing them up. But that would allow us to accelerate some of these, these street projects on page seventeen, and move them up in the pecking order a little bit.
Chairman.
Dave, Dave Graff, I'd like to ask you, now that I brought it up and everybody else has commented about what a great job Nuncio did, I'd like to point out that that's over ten years ago, and you go there today, and it's, it looks like it was done yesterday. And he did it of good, high-quality concrete. And Joe Cols is right, those alleys did get a lot of trucks, and it.
Twenty-three years.
I just stand corrected, it was twenty-three years ago. You do this thing right, and it's once a lifetime. Are we gonna use the same high-quality construction material that Alderman Nuncio's family used to make that a durable alley?
I don't know the particulars of his alley, but we, I am proposing that we would do those in concrete, yes.
Thank you, I'm definitely concrete. And I would have no objection then to the current finance chairman's wish to do half in ten and half in eleven, as long as we finish them before the price of concrete gets out of hand.
Go ahead, Mr. Caddell.
Eugene, I think you and I are on the same page, maybe a few other council members, I'm not sure that what Wally just said is, lines up with what I was hoping to do. I kinda wanted to cut back the alleys to about fifty percent, like a lot of people up here seem to be doing. But I don't think I'm necessarily in favor of then picking up the other fifty percent. I mean, I'm thinking, taking the worst fifty percent right now, and that extra money I was hoping to be able to use to, to do, you know, some work on roads that are not on our five-year plan, to get them, you know, I, I'm, hey, I'm happy with any street that's already listed to be done here, because we know it's gonna get done. I'm more concerned about the streets that aren't on this list, that, you know, that you can lose your shoe in, a hole on them, or worse. So those are the, those are the more extensive than normal spring patching, you know, that I was, I was hoping to do to get these roads to last a little bit longer. So I don't, I mean, I don't know where all the money's gonna come from, how this is gonna pan out. So obviously, the concept of doing half alleys now and half next year, it's still the same amount of money. I mean, I'm proposing get some more money, I think quite possibly more than that hundred thousand dollars that Dave has earmarked in here, to do some extreme interim patching.
You're gonna get tired of this answer over the years, but it's a policy call. If you want to do half of the alleys over the five-year period of time and not do the other half, then that frees up an extra six-hundred thousand to force feed six-hundred thousand more in streets into the five-year plan. And/or, if you look at the cash flow projections on page six, at the end of any given year, over the next five years, there's still two million dollars plus in cash on hand. And if you wanted to accelerate some other streets, you could draw that down a little bit. You could conceivably, you know, up that, what number was that? That was page sixteen, seventeen. You know, we're showing, we're showing six-hundred thousand dollars next year, and then a break in eleven, and then a million-one in two thousand twelve, and a million-six in two thousand thirteen. You can conceivably put another three-hundred thousand a year into those years, and accelerate even more if you want. It's really just a function of how the numbers play out. So again, it's a policy call. If you want to divide the alleys half this year, next year, half the following year, that's fine. If you want to do just half of them and leave the rest on the, you know, on the border, and deal with them later on, we can do that as well. It's just a function of making the numbers work.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. We had a motion. Who's second? I made a motion that we do fifty percent of the alleys, and we take six-point-two, six-twenty, and put it towards road projects to re-grind streets that are still, need to be done in the whole entire city. Was that not the motion, Ellie?
It was, but I didn't get a second.
Oh, do I have a second on that motion? Okay. Question on the motion.
Just to verify, do we actually have fifty percent of our alleys that are not gonna be targeted by any kind of intersection redo, round, you know, different reconstructions that we're gonna do? Downtown planning, thank you.
Yeah, I don't believe any, possibly, I suppose possibly the division street ones could have some impact, but other than that, none of them are jumping out at me as being tied up with any other project.
Okay.
So I think, yes, I think we could do fifty percent.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lewitan.
I want to make sure I understand this, and if not, I'd like it to be an amend, will you accept an amendment to your thing, that, your proposal, that the other fifty percent be done the following year?
Remember, he is saying we are only working on the first capital project, and we'll come back to visit that next year. He's looking for.
Is that true?
Well, the only ones that are set in stone, but I.
Is this year?
Yeah, but it would, if your long-term plan is to do half of them this year and half next, then we'd plug that into our five-year plan. I'd want some sort of direction. At this point in time, do you want to do half the alleys this coming year and half the following year, or half the alleys this year and leave the other half off the five-year plan entirely?
I think that that's what you meant when you said half now and half later. I think you, and that's why I just wanted clarified and put into stone what you're saying.
My, my motion on the floor was we do half this year and half next year.
Then that's what I'm asking you to confirm, and you've confirmed it.
But if, if, if there's money available. Mr. Nucio.
If we're gonna put it in stone, I'd say we put the alley into three and not two. I need to, I feel we should take care of the streets where the residents come first. Because you never know, one of these vacant properties on Irving Park might have a very good business owner who may want to put in an alley for the city.
So I want to confirm, then your proposal is now amended to fifty percent the first year, twenty-five percent the second year, and twenty-five percent the third year. Is that what you're proposing?
No, we have a motion on the floor right now. John.
I may have to retract my second, because I misunderstood the motion. I thought you said do half, and then take the rest of the money and put it in the streets, which doesn't leave that other six-hundred thousand for future alleys. Unless we pull more money.
My motion on the floor, the initial motion on the floor was take, do half the alleys now, take that six-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, and to put it into resurfacing the areas that are bad first. That's the motion on the floor.
Yeah, but the question we're asking you is what about, when does the, the other fifty percent get done in your motion?
We'll consider it down the line.
You can't, he wants direction for the five-year plan.
Well, Alderman Wesley's motion prevails, it would be fifty percent of the alleys next year, and the other fifty percent off the table for the five-year planning process. We just defer it off the five-year map.
Is that your intent, Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Then I will hold my second, and I will keep it out on the floor.
We got a motion on the floor, we got a vote on the motion. So you could shoot it down, or whatever. Go ahead, do a roll call.
Okay, Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Lewitan?
I like half your motion, yes.
Alderman Chalky?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Cols?
Yes.
Alderman, can I?
No.
It passes. It passes? Okay. Let's do the bridge. Any problems on the bridge?
Mr. Nucio.
Wally, a quick question. That bridge, do we, is that a bridge that if ever needed replacing, is that, is that our city's responsibility, or is that a county thing? And would there be federal funding on Elizabeth Drive?
Elizabeth Drive is our bridge. It's pretty common to get federal funding when you're replacing a bridge. Most municipalities don't do that totally on their own, but it is our bridge.
Because, can I continue? I heard over on Thorndale or something, they lowered the weight limit, the county did. So I'm guessing these bridges might be close in age. Is this something that's gonna have to be replaced on the road, that we should start looking for federal funding now, because it might take a little time?
The bridge is in good condition now. We are proposing an inspection. I don't know when it was inspected last.
Last year, I think.
You know, I can't tell you exactly when we're gonna need a new bridge, but I think it's a number of years off for this one. But we'll, we'll come back to you with the report after the inspection's done.
Christine Winger.
Didn't we get some kind of grant from Dennis Rabelotti's office on this bridge? Some kind of bridge maintenance? Does that sound right to you, or no?
No, that, that was a, if I'm mistaken, that was a bridge, John, correct me if I'm right, to get this, over Salt Creek to your neckwoods, was that the?
Well, it had something to do with a pedestrian bridge. And beyond that, I don't have any details. I know the mayor probably knows more about it than any other council member, but it was about a pedestrian bridge. And it was like seventy-five thousand dollars, so not a very big dent in a bridge at that either.
Just real quick to chime in, Alderman Kelly, you are correct. It was seventy-five thousand dollars. And it was for a pedestrian bridge. I believe the original descriptor on that was over Salt Creek. There was no specific placement for that bridge, and it was part of a member grant through Representative Rabelotti's office, that we did get that grant for seventy-five thousand dollars.
Christine Winger.
Okay, so where's, is that in the plan over by, let's see, is that in the plan yet, I guess? Perhaps it's not in the plan, I guess.
Because it's a mansion grant, I believe, so we would have to figure out where that's coming from, I believe. So that is not in here.
So we may be able to use it.
We may.
For this, like half of it, or no?
I don't know, I think it's, but that, but, I'm sorry.
Actually, that seventy-five thousand is gonna be allocated towards the, the safety improvement, the Great Separation Safety Improvement, for the pedestrian underpass underneath the track. So that's what that's being allocated for.
And it'll be with us for a while? We're not gonna lose that money?
No.
Okay.
Well, there's a, there's a time limit, but it coincides with the construction of the project.
Okay, thank you. And just to follow up, it, have we at least painted this bridge once in the past five years? I feel like we keep putting this off and off, and now it's twenty-ten, you know, when we're gonna do it. Is it because it really doesn't need the painting, or are we putting it off, or, you know?
It was painted last approximately eight years ago. For some reason, they didn't paint the whole thing. That's one of the reasons I want to get it inspected now, is to try and find out what the story was with that. We may end up needing to paint the whole thing now. What we talked about in the past was painting the railings only. That's the only work that I've ever heard proposed for it. And we were originally going to just include that, and then we thought, maybe we should step back and take a look at the whole thing, since there are some questions about it. Again, part of it was painted eight years ago. I don't know when the remainder of it was painted. But again, at least on my cursory inspection of it, I didn't see any problems with that. But we need a detailed inspection of it.
Okay, so can we move it up to oh-nine? I don't know why that we would need to wait till twenty-ten.
No, that's, just to make, I'm on the same page, when it says oh-ten, that's fiscal year oh-nine, oh-ten.
Oh-nine, oh-ten.
So it's the, it's the fiscal year that starts this coming May.
Gotcha. Okay, so in theory, it would get looked at this summer?
Yeah.
Okay, I can live with that.
Yeah, because our budget goes from oh-nine to oh-ten.
Okay, okay.
Cols. I believe they painted the rails the last time, and they did inspect the bridge a couple years ago. And they said the bridge is okay, because it doesn't take truck weight, it don't take car weight. So you don't, I mean, the tonnage on that bridge isn't, isn't as heavy as the bridge on Thorndale, or any of them, because it's only used as passenger cars through there.
Anyone on that? Okay. Move on, storm sewers, any concerns about that?
What about the bike bridge?
Well, if you want to go through page by page, that's fine. Bike bridge, two thousand fourteen, though, I wasn't going to make a big issue out of that, because it's two fourteen.
A white elephant.
I mean, you.
We should stand eight up for two thousand nine and ten.
We just, I'm really concentrating on two thousand nine, two thousand ten this, tonight.
Okay.
I mean.
Keep going.
Because we're gonna revisit this again down the line. Cedar Avenue Drainage Improvement. Obviously, we've been having some drainage problems, so we added that into capital project. Woodland Court Detention Basin's in there. The Forest View, Oakwood, Harvey, and Edgewood Drainage Studies in there. Storm Sewer Salt and Drainage Study, we're gonna do a study in a part of area that's really been bound for flooding, that we're gonna try to correct that problem. And then, any questions on that? Mr. Cols.
Anything can be done about Joe Johnson's retention pond between Forest Eighty and the other condominiums that are on Spruce. Is there any way we can, if the council could get a hold of something about annex, either try to ordain that to Wooddale, or get, I got a meeting with the homeowners at four-eighty, and they wanted to know if they could lease it or buy it.
Could we?
And I don't know what we could do. Is there anything we could do?
Could we, could we discuss that ad, committee me or council me, because right now, I mean, I don't think.
All right, okay, but I was just, the Stormwater Commission could find out.
Right, I mean.
Somebody ain't taking care of it.
Right.
We're taking care of it.
Okay.
And it's time that, he don't want to take care of it, why don't we, we, we take it over, or something like that.
Okay, well, we could look into that.
All right, okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, I just had a question on the Forest View, Oakwood, Harvey, and that. Drainage Study, what, what are we gonna study? I mean, creek comes up, creek goes down. What, no, I mean, it's simply, that's, that's what it is. What are we gonna study?
There's a lot of drainage problems within the ditches and the right-of-way. There's a lot of drainage problems, not related to creek flooding, that are like areas between the homes and those swales. There's a lot of areas, if you're driving down those streets, you'll see kind of a patchwork of some ditches filled in, some ditches not filled in. And I guess I'd like to come up with some sort of uniform roadside treatment for that whole neighborhood, for those four streets. You know, possibly some new storms, storm sewers to the creek. What I'm anticipating is doing a complete topographic survey of that whole area, study of the drainage, pipe sizing, and maybe some alternate typical sections for the roadway. And another big question, whether we want to reconstruct those streets, or do some sort of lesser treatment to them. But those ditches have quite a few issues out there.
Like, okay, when we, they just, when they did the sewers, they just redid the whole engineering thing on it. Now we're saying that engineering is wrong?
I'm not familiar with.
They, they just redid the sanitary sewers on Edgebrook, Oakwood, Forest View, and that. And these ditches they have in there now were engineered with part of that replacement of the sanitary sewers. So now you're saying that that engineering was wrong? Or we have to re-engineer the engineering?
Well, I think a lot, a lot of the ditches have been filled in by the homeowners over time. This isn't anything that's happened just in the last year or two, this is over many years. But a lot of them are just not, the drainage just isn't functioning the way it should be.
Go ahead, Dan.
On the engineering for the Stormwater consultant, can you make sure that they include the corner of Sarah and Potter? This is an area that people haven't complained about, but have flooding anytime it rains hard. So if you'll make sure that's included, and that's appreciated.
We can add that to the list, and what we'll have to do if this gets adopted is come up with a list of projects, to see what we want to do this year. And I'm thinking if this, if this all works, if we're all happy with it, we might want to consider making this an annual project. And every year, we would take another, either a particular drainage problem, or even a particular watershed or detention basin, and just kind of work our way through all the problem areas. I think we have more, more problem areas that we can do, you know, in one year for fifty thousand dollars, but we wanted to get started on it. This is also something the Stormwater Commission has talked about, coming up with a list and prioritizing all these projects. So we'll consider that, and any other ones that anyone wants to put out there, we can, we'll look at those.
Mr. Caddell.
With regards to these four streets around the creek, I mean, I took a vest-
Uh, with regards to these four streets around the creek, um, I mean, I took a vested interest when they were doing the sanitary sewers in Forest View, and I can, I can tell you with a lot of confidence that essentially, the lay of the land was restored to within 90, 95% of the way it was before they did the, the sanitary sewers. So, no, no storm sewer modification or amendments were made, at least not on that street. Um, in fact, I can cite a couple of cases, places where, uh, they're sitting water that didn't used to be there before they replaced the sanitary sewers. So, I mean, I might, I might argue just the opposite, that it may have made the situation a little bit worse. Um, I'm the one that had brought this to staff's attention, although staff was already aware of the problem there. I still think that, you know, I believe there may be a possibility for some grant money sent ultimately, maybe to pay for the engineering, but certainly hopefully to pay for some of, some of any construction that might need to be done, uh, with, with, you know, new, new direction, and green building, and design and engineering, uh, and considering these streets lie, you know, in, in part in floodplain, are, are constructed over 70 years ago, were planted without, uh, any, any topography changes, I mean, it's the, it's the natural lay of the land, good or bad, 70 or 80 years of homeowners changing elevations, um, deteriorating storm swales. I, I think anything that happens in here might, we might wanna consider doing something unique, that, that is environmentally, uh, sound, and the concept of curb and gutter, uh, and more culverts in these areas has me kinda concerned. I'd much rather see, uh, some surface drainage, and, and some natural water filtration before it gets back to the creek. It seems to me that the unique character of, of this area, and the unique problems of this area, might be a good place to, to try a unique, a unique solution, so, um, but, but Alderman Kneipp, I, I don't know about the other streets, but I know in Forest View, no, no attempts were made to correct any drainage problems when the sanitary was done.
Nunezio, please, for some explanation, Christine.
Uh, Dave, talking about doing the study, I mean, when, I don't know, basically, any standing, we wanna get rid of standing water and whatnot, wouldn't it be better to spend the money to fix up those drainage ditches where they have been filled in and whatnot? So, uh, I mean, we know, we know we have some standing water, we wanna get the water flowing, wouldn't it be better to spend the money on repairing those ditches?
I think we have to look at the whole roadway profile, and that's why I'm proposing to do a complete topographic survey of that whole area, I don't think it's a, it, it's, it's not as simple a matter as, um, just re-grading one part of a ditch, I think it's doing both ditches and the whole street, and looking at the roadway profile, and possibly re-profiling the road along with it, and I think that's why-
But-
...the cost is maybe a little bit higher than just, um, you know, a more ordinary study.
Don't we have all this, like, we're putting in all the GIS for the sanitary and all that, don't we have the topography on all this stuff already?
Not, it's not a design-level topography.
Oh. Christine Winger?
Thank you. What's sounding unique about this area possibly is that several neighbors probably filled in, and I certainly don't wanna hear that we're suggesting doing street reconstruction, because neighbors filled in their swales, and if we're gonna look at this area as fill-in, and what to do next on it, then we certainly have several other areas in Wooddale, backyards that have been filled in, swales, and other areas, so if we're gonna adopt this type of policy, we need to look at all the areas, and, and come up with a policy that serves each situation. Thank you.
Cadell?
Well, let me just also put out there that another idea behind trying to bring this out was ultimately, hopefully saving the city some money, there is this standing policy of whenever a street gets reconstructed completely, that does not have curb gutter and sidewalks, it is to get curb gutter and sidewalks. I have always been very much against it, and particularly in areas that have drainage problems and flooding problems that are current. So, I guess my, you know, what I think Dave Graff and staff is going for here, is to really understand what's going on here, the problems, potential ways to fix it, and, and answer the question about road reconstruction, because none of these roads have been reconstructed in 20 or plus years, to, to my knowledge, they're probably gonna happen within the next 10 years. And, and how are they gonna be done? I think that's, that's what staff is, is trying to go for here. Um, I think to do it in such a way that it doesn't, you know, change everything, including curb gutter sidewalks, it, it, there might also, ultimately be a saving, but I don't think we're talking about reconstructing these roads because of the drainage problems, I think we're talking about reconstructing these roads, because they're 20-plus years old.
If I can just add, and in general, we have earmarked certain roads for reconstruction, and when we do that and put in the curb and gutter, obviously, the ditches go away, um, and that's the end of it. A couple of things, unique things about this situation is, one, is, you know, this past year, this county, DuPage County, did adopt their best management practice ordinance, which really frowns upon getting rid of ditches and putting in curb and gutter, that's number one. Number two, again, we've talked about, this, this neighborhood is a little bit unique, and it's, and it's rural character, I just don't, it's not typical with some of the area, other areas in town, um, where there's a rural section on the road, and everything else around it has the urban section, and it, and it just, it looks out of place to leave the ditches, I think in this case, and obviously, that's subjective, but in this case, it, it seems like it would warrant more of, of keeping the ditches and not putting in, again, the urban section with curb and gutter and sidewalk.
Any other questions on that? Okay, we'll go on to streets. I thought we pretty much-